We want to let them know that if anybody's on there that it's we're waiting.
Hi, Tom. Good.
Be that he got my message.
Are you okay? Am I in your way?
You're okay.
Oh, he's struggling.
I am, I'm telling you. Yeah, they're walking around in Vegas really just.
So what, what are they? I know you get some shots, but is there anything that you?
Didn't do a thing for me.
Round recordings, guys, so be careful.
I know still.
You gotta wait for everybody to arrive. Can't remind my mom.
Is surgery an option?
Like, yes.
Oh, gosh.
February.
You're still a young man. You don't really measure. No, I'm serious.
I know.
Be very cautious with that.
My, my mom's ninety years old. Got a good chance I could go up.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Aaron, your coat reminds me of like a Christmas coat.
Very Christmasy, doesn't it?
Christmasy.
Very Christmasy. Ready for the holiday season.
Morning.
This one right here, yeah. And according.
You can come around.
You can come right here. We always look forward to this.
I just keep on.
How you doing today? I had some work this morning. I would bet you, I would have bet you over there.
Hey, Connor's looking for me.
How you doing?
Yeah, good. That's good right here. It's great, huh?
Funny, Roger.
Right here, honey.
Let's Google.
After you. Trouble you're gonna have with standing up for the play, but. But we gotta do what?
So I'm gonna have you lead in the pledge when we get to the city.
Sit right here.
We're gonna stand up and how you start with us. Then everybody. A little bit.
Most aisles here in the world.
They, you gotta go that way.
Need to remind you that you must vote.
They can't.
Okay. They have the kids, they don't let me. We have to vote as well.
Oh, absolutely. Do you have all my information?
I do. Just like I was prepared.
Let me get signed in and then.
I'm moving in here.
New resolution or the addition?
That's how we go off.
It's racing.
Okay.
Get my cell phone.
Tim, is there a place you wanted that added to me?
Are these added?
These are.
I know they take one and pass.
Got it done.
Add.
Perfect. Your business what will be?
Well, actually, it's part of claims. We can just deal with it. I won't look at you.
Since one.
Same thing.
Pass it on. Take one and pass it on.
Is there a resolution on here for kids? You guys come from.
Did everybody get one? I have.
I have two, two. Got enough.
Yeah.
You got me off use.
Tom.
That's it up.
Tell me why this is going off.
I gotta remember that. I will. Did you ever run a meeting before? No. No. You're about to.
I did.
For the chairperson.
It's gonna give me.
Run the meeting. You know what this thing is? Uh, you know, you don't have to hit it. That's our goal.
Yeah.
So this is our agenda.
Destiny.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Today's the twenty-sixth. Eleven, huh?
Current meeting, that's where I'm headed.
Where?
Um, sister.
Oh, that's from twenty, January twenty-three. Yeah, you are there.
It's the last. No, we did. I'm open.
They redid this thing and it's.
Look at it. There you go. There's our.
I know the resolution.
Hey, I know you. I'm good.
I see what you're saying.
I'm.
Oh, no, that's.
Are you guys all ready?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know what? I had that so I'll come right up to the day.
That's why I fixed that.
It's very trial.
The first time I've done it.
Yep, right down, go down. There's a door, right? Yep, there you go. Are you guys ready? I'm gonna call the meeting order when you're ready.
Just a second. Yeah, I really messed her up.
I had it all set.
She let me touch the screen and, well.
Oh, she made some strong coffee. Oh, my gosh. Who made it? Oui.
What do you want on the agenda?
Yeah. All right. We're good.
There we go.
We're golden.
Ready?
Thank you. We are more than ready.
All right, guys, we're gonna call this meeting. And Miss Bella's gonna lead us in the pledge. So let's stand for the pledge. I'm right up here. You ready? Go ahead.
I.
Good job. Roll call.
Is Jenny David here?
She is.
All right.
All right. Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
All right. Charles Wiltzy?
Here.
Brenda Simmons?
Here.
And Frank Scott?
Here.
So we got right here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Commissioners, any additions, corrections to the agenda? Any?
I'll move that we approve the agendas presented.
We have a motion. Motion Commissioner Scott?
Second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, declarations of conflicts of interest. Commissioners, are there any?
I have none.
None.
Uh, item four, review of minutes. We have minutes from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes.
I reviewed the minutes. I'll make a motion and we accept it as presented.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott? Or support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion?
I would like to make one comment on that. On, uh, on your iPads, it says October twenty-fourth, but it's been changed.
For the date.
Oh, oh, here it's.
The top header.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four B, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I approve the minutes. Make motion, we approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiltzy.
They like support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item five, go ahead and read that, honey.
Public comment on agenda item matters.
Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
Don't say anything.
Item six, correspondence. We received correspondence from the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy related to pending new source review application report, and I ask O'County support for area agency on aging infrastructure. Those have been received and filed. Item say, item seven, consent agenda. We're gonna take these individually, guys, okay? Item seven, a resolution to declare November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four is Ogama County Kids Day. I'm gonna let Miss Bella read that. So this right here, honey. So this is what we're gonna be voting on right here. We're gonna, you're gonna start right there.
Whereas Ogama County Board of Commissioners reorganized today's kids as tomorrow's leaders and whereas several youths were selected to participate in the third annual Kids' Day as a repu- as a public official program in Ogama County, and whereas these participants were selected based on their individual behavior and educational excellence, and whereas Ogama County Government Departments probate count for thirty-fourth Circuit Court and eighty-second district, District Court will host student participates in this educational program. Therefore, be it resolved that the Ogama Board of Commissioners does hereby declare Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four as Ogama County Kids' Day. Be it further resolved that the board extends its official welcome to all student participants.
Here's our resolution. Would anybody entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion Commissioner Simmons, support from Commissioner Wiltzy. Any further discussion? These are sixth graders from Woodmore Prescott Schools, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, uh, seven B, resolution to accept emergency management performance grant. This resolution is sponsored by Emergency Management Coordinator Mike Bowers. Ogama County received an emergency management performance grant issued through the Federal Emergency Management Agency to support the building sustainment and delivery of core capabilities essential to achieving the national preparedness goal of a secure and resilient nation. Allowable cost supports efforts to build and sustain core capabilities across the prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery mission areas. Approval of the of the resolution will document acceptance of the FEMA Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of sixty-one thousand, thirty-eight dollars. The resolution also access, accept the proposal from Integrated Solutions Consulting for the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update at a total cost not to exceed forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Hold. Or.
Support.
Motion Commissioner Wiltzy, support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion?
First or second, anyone?
Um, that's a combination. It is that the comment, that's a combination of both. There's two of them there. Correct? Am I reading that correctly? Yeah, for sixty-one thousand and forty-four thousand. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew?
Yeah.
Charles Wiltzy?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes, yes.
Frank Scott?
Yes. See, yes.
And Jenny David?
Yes. Item seventy, resolution to approve agreement for extension services. This resolution is sponsored by MSU Extension Director Julie Darden. It is a mission of MSU Extension to help improve their lives through an educational process that applies knowledge to critical issues, needs, and opportunities. MSU Extension meets its mission by providing extension educational programs in agricultural and agribusiness, children and youth development, including four H, health and nutrition, and community food and environment. Approval of the resolution will authorize an agreement with MSU Extension to provide services to Ogama County residents for fiscal year twenty twenty-five at a cost not to exceed ninety thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, subject to approval as deformed by the Ogama County Attorney.
Make a motion to approve. For.
Well, Chairman Commissioner Simmons, support from Commissioner Wiltzy. I thought we, I, I guess, is Julie here? I thought we could cut this. Is this what we agreed upon?
Right, so, um, based on the conversation at the committee, the whole meeting, there was an addition of roughly ten thousand dollars that was proposed. And as the conversation went, that was cut in half uh, to five thousand pending our receipt of a revised contract from the committee.
So I guess the ninety thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight.
Right, so that includes the, the standard that, that we've funded for, you know, several years plus roughly five thousand dollars, the fun part of uh, the master gardener, I believe is what it was.
So five thousand is just added to the.
That, that includes the five thousand.
Okay.
Questions?
Yes. Commissioner Scott?
Oh, does, so the millage bring more than that in?
Yes, but bearing in mind that there are other expenses that you don't have on here, particularly the secretary position.
Okay.
Which is completely funded through the millage.
Right, and it doesn't go route through MSU first to us.
No. We pay that position directly.
All right.
Commissioner Wiltzy?
Um, as Commissioner liaison with MSU Extension, we actually had our Zoom meeting this past Monday. Typically, we meet a couple times a year, and then we have Zoom meetings every other month, and this topic was brought up because this is a by county area, you know, there'll be more than just Ogama County. And, um, again, like I said last week, I mean, I think this is great. Um, I think the, the main thing is gonna be to find a quarterback for Ogama County to run with this. Of course, being able to market this, because I think a lot of people will be very interested in, uh, in, uh, taking part in this. So this is a good deal.
Other comments? Commissioner Simmons?
Okay.
Commissioner Mayhew? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltzy?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Frank Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
Item seventy, resolution to appoint a member to the Ogama County Land Bank Authority. This resolution was sponsored by County Treasurer and Land Bank Authority Chairperson Karen Piglowski. On December twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, the Ogama County Board of Commissioners approved an interlocal agreement to create the Ogama County Land Bank Authority. The Board of Commissioners must appoint all members of the Authority Board except for the county treasurer, who serves as chairperson for the Authority Board. Authority member and former Mills Township Supervisor David Ryan recently resigned from his seat on the Land Bank Authority. Who wrote the resolution will appoint current Mills Township Supervisor Bruce Beach to the Land Bank Authority Board for the remainder of a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Make a motion, we support this appointment.
Motion Commissioner Wiltzy?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Karen, do you want to add anything to that?
Now, he's attended a couple of our meetings already. He's excited to serve on the board. He'll be, he'll be a great addition.
Perfect. And Bruce was here at a committee of the whole.
What?
Yes, sir.
Well, this is just a it's just a, a, a kind of slot. Anybody can fill it, right?
No, there's specific guidelines of people that have to serve.
Okay, so is it Millstown supervisor?
A supervisory position.
Okay. All right, all right, that's what I wonder.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven E, resolution to support for revenue sharing trust fund legislation. This resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahanni. County services are made possible through stable and predictable investments in local government. A stable revenue sharing trust fund, which would be created by the state and the House bills four-two-seven-four and four-two-seven-five will protect vital resources and help provide critical local services that are relied upon daily. Whoever the resolution will doc- will document the board's support for the revenue sharing trust fund and urge the Michigan Legislature approval of House bills four-two-seven-four and four-two-seven-five.
I'll make a motion this night.
Motion Commissioner Wiltzy?
Support.
Support Commissioner Scott. Tim, would you like to explain this?
So right now, the revenue sharing funds that we receive are subject to the center's legislative appropriation and final approval by the governor in the state's budget. Sometimes the state decides they don't have enough money to send to the counties. They will maybe cut us or, uh, make other, maybe only a small adjustment. To the extreme, back in the early two thousands under, uh, Governor, uh, Granholm, we actually had a it's been back to back about four years where there was no revenue sharing that actually came to the county.
Yeah.
And we went through something called a revenue sharing. Getting revenue sharing reserve fund that we had to create. Our taxpayers were actually asked to pay four years worth of property tax over three years, and that's how it was funded. So for that period of time, and in the case of this county, somewhere along the neighborhood of about ten years, the state did not provide any revenue sharing. Well, to prevent these type of extremes from happening in the future, the Michigan Association of Counties has proposed that the state create what's called a revenue sharing trust fund, where there will be a small percentage, a fraction of a percentage of the uh, sales tax that will be dedicated to the revenue sharing trust fund, and that will build interest over the years. And the state legislature will no longer need to worry about committing their general fund dollars to funding revenue sharing. This fund will do all of the revenue sharing, uh, component for the state, and it also um, protects it from any kind of legislative manipulation. So these funds cannot be transferred to any other purpose. That would be a dedicated fund strictly for county revenue sharing. And this is, uh, two bills that appear uh, better, a chance better than, than fifty-fifty of being approved in the lame duck session at the state legislative level. And hopefully then will be approved by the governor. What Michigan Association of Counties has done is also asked, and I have a letter here uh, for the signature of the board chair that we write specifically to the governor to support this, because apparently that might be the final, uh, roadblock to actually getting this approved. A number of counties have already done this. They've asked for these letters to be in the hands of the governor by next week, so this is a very timely resolution.
Any downfall to this?
None, uh, even if it, uh, these bills end up not being introduced. Revenue sharing is not cut, uh, specifically. We still have revenue sharing coming in for the twenty twenty-five fiscal year. What this does, those help protect that revenue, uh, for the county in the future.
Any questions, comments, commissioners? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven F, resolution to accept a quote for transit building overhead door project. This resolution is sponsored by Transit Director Tony Dubay. Ogama County Public Transit was awarded a grant from the Michigan Department of Transportation for structural improvements at the transit facility. On October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Ogama County issued request for RFP number zero-two dash two-five for the purchase and installation of two fully insulated overhead commercial garage doors with openers. At the regular meeting held on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the Special Transit Advisory Committee opened and reviewed three bids received in response to the RFP. Approval of the resolution will accept the recommendations for, of the Special Transit Advisory Committee to accept the proposal submitted by Miller Construction and Equipment for the purchase and installation of two fully insulated overhead commercial garage doors with openers at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Award of the bid is subject to final approval by the Michigan Department of Transportation.
Move to move to, uh, approve.
Support.
A motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Wiltzy, would you like to add anything to this since you're on the advisory board?
Um, now, we had a good long talk about this last week. Um, these doors are very well needed. Um, again, it would be a local contractor that has just done work for us, which is always good. And ninety percent of the bill will be paid with grant funding. Over ninety percent.
Commissioner Simmons, you're also on the advisory board?
Yes, uh, when, when you read, um, paragraph where it says October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, blah, blah. Is, you said installation of two commercial metal entry doors, and this, mine says three commercial entry doors.
For the purchase and installation of two fully insulated overhead commercial garage doors with openers.
Comment, mine isn't correct.
Yeah, it must be correct. There's two overhead doors and the other one is three pedestrian exterior doors.
Yeah, that's next. Right, yeah.
Okay.
Any further? Roll call vote.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yep.
Charles Wiltzy?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Frank Scott?
Yes.
Item seventy, resolution to accept a quote for transit building commercial entry door project. This resolution is sponsored by Transit, Transit Director Tony Dubay. Ogama County Public Transit was awarded a grant from the Michigan Department of Transportation for structural improvements at the transit facility. On October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Ogama County issued request for an RFP number zero-three dash two-five for the purchase and installation of three commercial metal entry doors with insulated door glass. At the regular meeting held on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the Special Transit Advisory Committee opened and reviewed the one bid received in response to the RFP. Approval of the resolution will accept the recommendation of the Special Transit Advisory Committee to accept the proposed proposal submitted by Miller Construction Equipment for the purchase and installation of three commercial metal entry doors with insulated door glass at a total cost not to exceed ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Award of the bid is subject to the final approval of the Michigan Department of Transportation.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Simmons, support from Commissioner Wiltzy. Commissioner Simmons, would you have anything to add to this?
No, I didn't realize it was two different quotes here for the transit.
Comment.
And this is also what grant funded, as it states in the resolution. Commissioner Wiltzy?
Uh, again, a local contractor, done work for us in the past. Three doors are very well needed. And over ninety percent of the cost will be funded through grant money.
Question, any other comments, questions? Yes, go ahead.
I want to point out for the board's benefit, that last line that the chair read with the resolution about this being subject to M dot approval. This is one that might not pass muster with M dot. They prefer to, they prefer, their, the rule is that they need to have at least three quotes uh, before they'll approve, uh, a bid. This is the second time this bid got issued, and we've only gotten the one response that was right here today. Uh, talking to Tony and to Ray, they believe that M dot does recognize that particularly in northern Michigan, it may be difficult sometimes to get three bids. So they're hoping that M dot will waive that normal requirement and allow this to go through. Uh, if not, then we'll be issuing the bid one more time and probably continue to do this to make sure that we properly expend all of the uh, grant funds that are available to pay for this. Uh, if this were strictly a county project, we've met our criteria. We put the bid out and everybody who might possibly want the bid had an opportunity to do so. If we only get one bid, that's the way it goes sometimes. But M dot's rules are a little bit different, so we might be seeing this again in the future. I'll have Tony keep us updated on what M dot decides.
Any other comment? Go ahead.
Um, I see in the other, the other RFP that you had four different work companies, they didn't bid the small doors.
No, in fact, them, the companies that, um, bid on the other project were, they specialize in garage doors.
Oh.
Yeah, I learned that too, and I also learned that there are territories. We had one respondent that said they don't serve West Branch. They're not that far away, but it's out of their territory, so they didn't bid.
Yeah, I see that.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote. Oops, I forgot something, I'm sorry.
On that quote that they said that it'd be less if they didn't have the bond? Do we have to have that bond for being in the county?
That's gonna be up to M dot. That, that's not our role. These projects, particularly this one, is way under what we would normally require that for. Basically, our policy starts at fifty thousand.
So it's whatever the state says.
Right.
Whether they're gonna have it or they're not.
Right.
Okay.
Other comments? Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
Charles Wiltzy?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Frank Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes. Resolution to reaffirm jail administrator, administrator position. This is item seven H. This resolution is sponsored by the Committee of the Whole. Michigan statutes reserve to the Board of Commissioners the authority to employ agents and employees of the county as may be deemed necessary to carry out of the powers granted by the laws of the state and provide that a county sheriff may appoint such deputy sheriffs as may be provided for by the Board of Commissioners. On September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty-four dash nine zero to formally adopt a general appropriations resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-five as required in the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act. The jail administrator position responsible for planning, organizing, and implementing operations and programs in the correctional facility is included in the approved budget. No funds are appropriated for any permanent position or employee not included in the approved budget. Approval of the resolution reaffirms the board's decision to establish the position of jail administrator and instruct Sheriff Gilbert to appoint a jail administrator immediately to perform duties consistent with the duty duly approved job description. Would someone like to entertain this motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion Commissioner Simmons?
Uh, support.
Support from Commissioner Scott, discussion?
Do we have any other people in charge that are in the union? The people under being in the union?
In the jail?
No. Like Brian Stein?
Brian Stein is technically under me.
He has a guy under him?
He's the guy who, who directs, he schedules, yes.
I'm just asked to. Like Chris?
Chris, uh, does not have authority. I mean, we have him in the department and there's a hierarchy of where we pay, but he does not have any authority as far as
Over the gas.
Hire, fire.
No, but the day-to-day to do their job.
Really, no, they, um, actually report to me directly.
I'm just asking if we have, we don't want to have problems down the road.
Explain.
Well, if we have somebody that is in the union, plus somebody that's in the union, that's, that was the problem before. If we already have this precedent set, what do we do?
Is there? That's a question. Do we have, do we have this?
I, I can't think of any place where we have that. It's typically an elected official or myself that has the, the authority to hire, fire, discipline, direct, what have you. The instance of the Building Inspections Department, we have, uh, Brian is actually the building inspector. Uh, and then cra- and then Craig is the, I believe is mechanical. I don't know if it's electrical as well, but they actually do different jobs.
Right, I know. I'm just, I don't want to get us damned up.
I totally understand.
Commissioner Simmons, anything? Since our, our meeting last week, has anything been brought to light? That you're aware of?
As far as appointment.
Anything since last week to this week, has anything new related to this topic been brought to light?
No.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, um. Commissioners set the budget, we set the allocations. We, we have decided that this is the appropriate way to go. We're seven weeks into the, we're seven weeks into the fiscal year. This needs to be done. If, and, and to abide by union rules. If, if this position isn't filled, then we have to lay off the next low, low seniority person. Because we'll have too many corrections officers allocated or too many past allocations. We need to move on this now. If the sheriff doesn't want to appoint somebody, fine, leave that position open. But then we have to take the next step and that, that is to lay off the next lowest seniority corrections officer.
Is that?
We're allocated for, for a certain number. That's what it is. So action has to be taken, either by the sheriff or by us.
That's fair. Commissioner Scott, or excuse me, Commissioner Wiltzy?
Again, this is an item that's been in front of us for a while. Sad that we're still at this point today. I ask if you could ask the sheriff if, last week, if anything has changed on his end. Again, I've been very consistent with the fact that Tom Howard is an asset. He's an asset to the current, especially an asset to the current operation with this change in the status of the jail. We need him. We need him for court security. We need him to make this transition work. I feel that a jail administrator position is a promotion for him. Anybody that does good work, who's committed, there's no reason for them to lose their job. So I just ask if you could ask sheriff.
That was the plan after, I was going to let off the commissioners first.
That's it.
Anything else from the commissioners?
Yeah, um. I guess, I, I got one over claims this week and I see, I see in the jail that the, the sheriff had ordered a badge for the, for the, for the lieutenant which is clearly stated as we stated before, before we approved this agenda and after we approved the agenda, that there is no, not a lieutenant's position. As with the sheriff's office. I, I don't know why we're spending this kind of money, spending any kind of money for this. It is not a position that's there anymore. That's the way it is. We're doing business different. That's, this, this fiscal year, we're doing, this fiscal year, we're doing this, business different than we did before. Things change.
Sure.
We, we studied it up and down. We asked all the questions, everything else. If somebody disagrees with us, they disagree with us. Um, but that's not, we keep operating. Maybe Brenda's got a question.
Are you done, Commissioner Scott?
Well, right now.
Do you have something to add before I talk to you?
This situation wouldn't be, uh, even here. If layout notes, notices that should have been given, were, were given, but we had, the sheriff refused to give one of the layoff notices. If he would have given that layoff notice, we wouldn't have this situation. We wouldn't have this going on for six or seven weeks like this. So, and the budget can only cover so much. We've already done the budget. We've already allocated the positions. And there's no position for lieutenant. And the sheriff doesn't have the right to um, go against the budget. Um, I don't, I don't know where the money's going to come from. So I'm saying, and there's a conflict of interest if you have unions, managing union in charge of the union. By manager, I mean hired, fired, all that kind of stuff. People in the union don't have the, the, the right to hire and fire. So really, it's like union um, managing union and just doesn't work. Union and management don't mix.
Sheriff? Did you have something first?
Yeah, yeah. This, this whole resolution is the moot point. We've already done this. We're just doing this again. I, I don't know why. I'm going to go ahead and move forward to reaffirm it, but my gosh, we've already done it. All right? We've already said it in the, in the budget vote. And if any commissioner didn't want to, all they had to do is say no. We've already done it. Yeah, everybody got a chance to think about it, ask any question they wanted to. We've already done it. I don't know why we're doing this again, really. We're doing this because we got a sheriff that just doesn't want to go along with us. Well, every, every place I worked, I had to go along with the ideas of the management. Whether I liked it or not. If I didn't want to, then go get another job. You don't like working here? Go have fun someplace else. That's it.
Sheriff, do you have anything to, has anything new come about from the Committee of the Whole meeting from last week to this week that you're able to bring to us? Any new information?
What I've been waiting on is, is our union meeting till the thirteenth. I'm hoping we can get some, some headway there. My issue, my biggest issue is, is pulling this jail administrator out of the union and there was some discussion last week about that is a moot point that possibly that will not happen, so I'm kind of, I'm kind of limbo here because I want to protect my employees. That's what this whole fight is about, is protection of my people. And I will, I will sit here and I'll dig both my feet in the ground for my people. That's, that's where the issue is. If we could get beyond that, we can move forward and, and, and make some progress for our people that's, that, that we represent. Biggest issue is that I am, I am supporting my people. I don't have very many left. I have to dig in and support my people. If we keep him in the union, I don't have a problem if you change him to jail administrator. I don't. Duties aren't the same. But I'm concerned about him being pulled out of the union because in past practice, there's been jail administrators that was fired in, in my eyes for no reason. We're all getting along with him now. He's, he does a great job for us. But that could change. And I want to make sure that doesn't change for this man because he's dedicated to this, this county. He's dedicated to that jail. We lean on him, me and the undersheriff tremendously to make that operation work. So I want to protect my people. I want to give the advancements to my people that do the job and do it well. That's where we're at. I guess that's all I got to say right now.
No, I, I have a couple of things I'd like to add. To that, I'm going to comment to Commissioner Scott. We have, we talked about this budget for, for at least three months in, in pretty good detail. This position was not hidden. This should have been addressed well before now. Um, instead, when, when asked when this wasn't brought to the table, it was stated in quotation, thought it would work itself out. Um, you know, this is nothing new. When asked for an argument, it is the argument that you stated was this person could be fired four years from now. Um, as we know, when, when the sheriff came into office, there was some thing, people let go and some changes made. So unfortunately, any new elected official has that right. We can't predict four years from now, though. To me, that's not a valid argument. I agree with Commissioner Simmons, union managing union is definitely a conflict of interest. I, we, we, I agree with Commissioner Scott as well. We made this decision. It's been made, however, it's been brought up again. I think this will put it to rest. Um, I think if all of us actually make a formal vote on this decision, this does set a precedence, which I think is our job. Um, my question to this is, and, and I hope that that individual takes this position. Um, I, I truly, truly hope and I don't see a reason not to. Um, it's not, it's not a reason to be worried about my job four years from now. Um, that, that's, that's not a valid argument. My question is, Tim, should there be a timeframe? This says immediately. In my opinion, with, with all the complications we've had with this resolution specifically over the last couple of weeks, I think we need a date on here. That way, immediately to some people is differently from an immediate to somebody else. So that's my question to you guys. Would you guys?
What, what's a layoff notice? Twenty one days?
Yes.
No, so, Tim.
What I'm saying is, I've already said it. If, if this position doesn't get filled, it's still a position. It's still in the allotment. Then, and at that point, then we have to lay off the next person. Next senior in line, in seniority. That's union rules. So, that action, we can start, we can take that action right now, twenty one days. I mean.
Tim, I guess, what is your, what is your recommendation here?
Well, there's two things you need to consider when you're going to set a deadline like this. Number one, is it legal? And of course, any deadline you set is legal because you've already approved the budget as Commissioner Scott pointed out. So what's reasonable? Is it reasonable to expect this to happen today? You know, maybe not. Maybe though certainly by your next meeting, you know, the action should have happened. And if we don't receive a personnel allocation request formally from the sheriff, then by that date, whatever, again, whatever date you choose, that's when the layoff notice is issued to the person with the lowest seniority and we'll just follow the union contract at that point as far as, you know, the twenty one days. So I think that's a good strategy. Just, again, just be reasonable. Remember that and we have one more day this week. So I just propose to you that by next week, if you haven't heard anything, then that notice is issued.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have something to add?
Yeah, um, when you talk about firing, um, uh, one administrator left for another position someplace else. And the other administrator was let, let go. My understanding is for inappropriate behavior. So, I don't know about any firing that was not just.
I also had a personal conversation with a previous jail administrator for this jail. So this, this position is not new for that facility. I, I wasn't aware of that because I know very little about, about that. Um, and the individual that I did speak to privately, uh, felt, felt the same that this should not be a union position. Um, and went into quite a bit of detail about it. So this is not something that's new or surprising. Um, so I guess, do you guys want to add? Do you want to add a timeframe to this or do you want to leave this as is?
Next meeting.
Well, I just assume add, add in, start the layoff notice now. We're seven weeks in already.
Yes, we are.
We've already talked with the union. Uh, they understand what, they under, the, the union business, they can understand that, that this position is a position. Uh, they can't tell us. They can't, that's the union. No union can tell the commissioners how to make an allocation thus. I don't care what they think. They can't do it. Union cannot tell us what, what we allocate for people. Now, is that a truthful statement, Tim?
It is, and I'm reminded that there is, uh, has been legislation pending and another one to watch for in the lame duck session that would make minimum staffing a mandatory subject of bargaining, so that could change. But as of today, uh, the group that's charged with signing the number of positions is the Board of Commissioners and you did this in your budget resolution.
There you go.
So you've met your obligation there as far as establishing those, uh, the number of positions and what they are.
So I'll, I'll modify. I'll just go ahead and modify this resolution and add in that at this point, we, we start the layoff notice period of time, um, for the next lowest one. We can always cut it off if, if there's a, if there's a selection made out of that pool, then we can always cut that off. But if, if the, if the, the pool, if that pool doesn't produce the, the person to go into that role, then we'll have, they'll have to find it from outside.
You're kind of losing me here. So do you want, what do you want to add to this current resolution? I mean, I mean, just.
Right now, right now, the, the, right now, we have a slot open right now, jail administrator. And we have s- uh, six, six, uh, corrections officers working, five allocated, correct?
Right.
So we're, we're over, we're
Correct.
Over. So what I'm saying is that along with this, that we immediately start the layoff notice for the sixth corrections officer.
Mr. Mayhew, guys. So, I, 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 in my opinion, I think we're kind of jumping. I, I personally would like to set a, a timeframe here. You said next meeting. Tim, what are you, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'd say next meeting, that's when you're all together.
Correct.
Okay, so, um, the, the process is the same no matter what the date is. If you wanted to select Monday or Tuesday or whatever, I mean, you can do that. I just say that just out of convenience.
Well, if the slots, I'm sorry, I don't want to speak on a turn, but if the slot stays empty, it stays empty. It's up to sheriff to fill it, right?
Right.
Not up to us.
Right, we're all aware of that.
Okay.
What we're looking for right now is for this resolution that, that we're this, that this resolution, a timeframe to this resolution to be effective. For this action is all I'm looking for right now. Sheriff, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I, I want to say something just for the record, and we talked about this last week. The P O L C union has two sections. One is the deputies, the portion of it, and the other is the command. It's the same P O C, P O L C, but there's two sections. So the command is different from the deputies. They can command the deputies because they're protected under a different section of the union. There's no conflict of interest when it comes to the union because they're, they're separate. Same union, but separate. We talked about that in detail last week. But I want to reaffirm that that would not be a, a conflict of interest. It, we've been doing this. This, this is nothing new.
Tim, do you want to add to that?
My argument on the other side of that issue is that even with your other units, just use your command and your deputy you still have a sheriff and undersheriff that really are doing the oversight, okay, that have that final authority. You don't have that with the jail. It's been stated here for a number of meetings, both the sheriff and the undersheriff have not managed the jail. That's not been their, their job. This will remove that. This will say this is a jail administrator. It is strictly a management position. And so all the authorities that come with it is are listed in the job description. That does make it a bit more neutral, uh, where you have the, the two unions, uh, representing, you know, the, truly, frankly, the same union, P O L C. Uh, honestly, I, I do see a conflict there. So that's though a, a matter for the Michigan Employment Relation Commission. Uh, those unions are established. They are what they are. Uh, and honestly, I think the structure that you've approved is, is the one that's best suited for the county's needs.
I would like to add to this resolution. I would like to see action within, within a seven day timeframe.
What, what? What action do you want to happen?
I would like a response to this, where we're at with this, where, where exactly?
Do you want this?
If action, if, let me finish, please. If action has been taken.
I guess what specific action is that filling that position? Is that the action you want to see?
Whatever. Do I hope that that's what happens? Absolutely. Do I hope that that current employee stays employee through the county? Absolutely. Is that I hope what happens? Yes. Do I have any control over what happens? No. So if, if that position is either vacant or filled within seven days, I'd like to see action on this.
If the position is not filled, what will be our action then?
Then it's, then it's back to our action.
The layoff.
Then we proceed.
Right, then your layoff.
We're giving, we're giving them seven days.
Your layoff notice.
I, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Scott. I do.
I will withdraw my addition to the, to the, uh, motion.
I understand what you're saying, but I think to give them seven days to figure out their plan of action is fair and, and then it's, we submit the layoff notice ourselves. Is that reasonable?
I believe it is.
There's a motion on the table. Is there support?
Yeah.
Support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote on this.
Um, I had Brenda.
We had.
Making it and, right.
We had to, because I'm, had added to it and then changed it back. I mean, we think we deserve to have another motion and second. Is that correct? Right.
Okay, so who, who made this, this one?
I did.
You made it. You seconded it. Okay. Okay, so now we're going to start with.
Okay. Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Greg Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Uh, Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
Charles Wolfsee?
Yes.
Uh, claims. We have claims, an amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Motion, Commissioner Scott?
How's it going?
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Discussion, guys. I know we have some discussion items.
I have a discussion item. Notice in, um, in the, um. And the claims, and I like to have this put on for discussion for our next, for the whole meeting. October twenty-second, there were twenty-five items bought for meal and November first, there's twenty-three. I didn't realize we had that many inmates in the, in the jail during that time, so. And they're going to, um, Rancheros. I just think there's less expensive place to go to buy meals for the inmates.
Comments?
So we have jail. We have, uh, do you want to be put on the committee of the whole, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Wolfsee?
Um, so we had our budget meeting last Friday.
Hold on just a second. Okay, go ahead.
We had our budget meeting last Friday, and, uh, this was brought to our attention, uh, regarding the meals at, at the jail. Which we've had a number of talks about. You know, Paul has filled us in for that first stretch from October first for a while. When we were getting consistent communication from the sheriff department regarding the jail transition. We were finding out a lot about this, and we were talking, and we were brainstorming, and we were strategizing, figuring out all these challenges. And then, of course, the last three, four weeks, we're going right back to the direction that we have been for basically last year and a half where there's no communication. People aren't coming to the table when they need the, to the table. The shareholders. And Sheriff, I'm not sitting here picking on the sheriff department. These are the facts. We have a budget committee. The budget committee consists of the shareholders of the county to save this county. It has been consistent since the budget committee has been formed, the sheriff department slash jail has not shown up. They've been to a few. So now we have the new budget started. We have a committee. Last Friday, who does not show up to the table? The sheriff department and the jail. This was brought up to us that now we have inmates eating at Rancheros. Here in West Branch. This is absolutely one hundred percent not acceptable. I'm done.
Um, I had some questions on, uh, we got, um, some badges and stuff for these positions that are not allocated. What is our plan with these? It looks like, uh, quite a bit, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents for one, and what's the cost of the other three?
Sixty-three dollars, forty-six cents.
What's our plan here?
We've got, uh, a couple of items, a couple of variables in play. The first one concerning the jail lieutenant badge. That's an invoice dated September thirtieth. Uh, this is one you can simply pull and not pay. It's not an authorized position and, and therefore really no reason for the purchase. The lieutenant sergeant, um, brass pins for the uniforms, the sixty-three dollar bill. Was paid for on the county's, uh, procurement card, the sheriff's office procurement card. That card is going to need to be paid because if we don't, then interest will begin to accrue and we'll have additional expenses. Uh, beyond the sixty-three dollars that we'll end up being responsible for. The procurement card policy does allow, um, suspension of that card if it's used for an inappropriate transaction. I think we've already established the board's position and statutory authority to assign the various. Employees or the various positions that you're going to budget for. Uh, this is no secret. Uh, both purchases were done well after your adoption of the budget on September twenty-sixth. So definitely one that, uh, was known to have some peril associated with it if the transaction were to proceed. If you were of, uh, a mind to do so, you could adopt a resolution. And you have a draft in front of you that does, uh, direct the treasurer to issuing invoice to the sheriff, reimburse the county. Or the brass pin purchase, the sixty-three dollar purchase. And then unless and until that occurs, that that procurement card is suspended. Uh, just you can protect the integrity of the budget that you've adopted.
Comments? Commissioner Wolfsee?
You know, again, you know, we've been very clear as a committee since the talks with the sheriff, undersheriff regarding additional command. That we would listen. We know that we're three officers short. We've made it all very clear and consistent, the fact that we want to see the three positions filled. We've asked questions regarding what is the specific duties of these current, um, deputies. Because of the importance of the twenty-four-seven road patrol millage. This millage our taxpayers have paid for, for their protection. They are paying for twenty-four-seven road patrol. We know that we are shorthanded, yet we've asked consistently for a plan in place and questions regarding why we can't support this. We were very clear with the budget that we were not going to support two more sergeants. And a lieutenant position, and the sheriff decided to make that decision on his own. And, and now we're, we're cooping costs on, you know, equipment bought for these positions that don't even exist. Again, at the end of the day, I sent the sheriff an email regarding this, the importance of this. We're put in this position, the sheriff, put in the position to protect the citizens of Ogama County. In a way, the board also is because we have to supply the budget for the sheriff department. We want to support law enforcement in this county. We want to support the sheriff department. It is important. It is one of the most important facts in, in our life is to support our residents and keep them safe. But we have to do it at a level that we can afford. This county, again, you've heard me say this for two years. We've run at a level, and the sheriff department's level has been one of those high levels that simply Ogama County cannot afford. It's very simple. It's math. It's numbers. So therefore, we have to figure out what we can afford. And we have to bring the best possible service we can. And we're not doing that right now. And then we have these type of things that are going on. All the things that are going on in this county, this jail transition, we're trying to work together and figure out, and look at the things that we're dealing with. Again, I say it a lot. It's, it's unacceptable.
Commissioner Scott?
I'm thinking hard about this, uh, um. I don't want to tell it, I don't want to tell the sheriff what to, what to buy within his budget. If he buys stupid things, it doesn't, doesn't work, and doesn't apply to somebody. It's stupid. I just want to backtrack a little bit, get to that food thing where. I thought this was a temporary, temporary thing because we made a transition in the jail. This, if we're going to continue to outsource, I was going to bring this up in our next law enforcement meeting before the next meeting. Before our next, uh, commiserat home meeting, and then probably bring it up in the commiserat home meeting. If this is going to be a continuing service and we're going to outsource all the food, then we need to go into a bid process. Because now we're going to exceed our limits. So this is another thing we just need to know. Are we going to insort, are we going to insource our food? Because we have a full kitchen. It's very easy to get safe serve certification on, uh, with the employees. I, I am a safe serve certified, cert, cert, certified. Certified, certified. You do it online now. There's no more classes to go to. You do it online. You take a test and you're certified, safe serve, so you can make sandwiches. And food for the inmates. We have a full, full kitchen there. No doubt with it. So if we're not, if we're not going to use that, if the sheriff decides not to use that. Uh, I'm not going to force him to use it, but if we're going to outsource, then we're going to, now we're getting into the numbers. That's going to have to go out for bid. And we're going to have to run RFPs for, for a certain type of menu. Because, I mean, it's not just the one, we don't have just one restaurant in town or one food service in town. I mean, we, we can put this out to anybody. I mean, if the schools want to make our lunch or. Commission on Aging wants to make our lunch, or whoever wants to make our lunch, a restaurant, or, or mom gets insurance and. And everything is provides that service.
I think the food, I appreciate that bringing, being brought to light, but I believe we're going to put that on the committee of the whole.
Okay.
So there's.
Okay, fine. Let's do that. Let's do that.
Derailed at this point in time. I, I, um, again, we, this deserves a hundred percent further conversation. We're going to put that on for next week.
That's fine.
I think we're back to right now where we are with this, these four badges, four, four total, correct? Or some pins and a badge?
Right, three pins and a badge.
Three pins and a badge.
Yeah.
I was asking where we were with questions with that.
Right. Well, once again, I, I, I hate to say it, uh, I, I don't want to, I don't want to micromanage, uh, purchases. If you want to waste money on stuff. I guess all I can do is report to my constituents that the, the sheriff is buying stuff that doesn't matter. Doesn't apply to anything. He just bought pins and badges for positions that don't even exist. So I guess my report at the next township meeting is exactly that. I'm following down that he's spending money on stuff that doesn't even apply.
I don't understand it myself, but I do not know. He's got the authority to do it, or he doesn't. I guess we're going to find out.
Even with the motions, we're asking, right now I'm asking.
Right.
Do you want to approve claims to pay for this? Pay for those four items?
I'm saying.
You don't want to approve them?
No.
Commissioner Simmons? I'm, I'm going to agree, um. And the reasoning, and I, I, I understand what Commissioner Scott is saying, and I don't, I don't disagree with that aspect neither, that we have a budget. We have an outset. Once you're out, you're out. However, what was brought up in the previous meetings was that this isn't the first time. The denial was put in. It was put back into claims three different times. So, uh, it, the only argument here would be that this is before, this, this is after our budget. Our budget was approved on nine twenty-six, you stated.
Right.
And this one was put through on nine thirty?
That's the date of the invoice. It was submitted in claims for this round, so it was submitted like last week.
Um, and then the other, so this was, uh, badge. What about the pins? Were those done before the budget was approved?
No, they were done afterwards as well. The billing date is October thirty-first. The message that came with the order says we've received the following order. The date is October thirty-first, so it appears to be a month into the budget when they were ordered.
So I guess it sounds like, uh, Commissioner Wolfsee, I don't know if you gave an answer, uh, did you want to approve this or not approve this?
I do not approve it.
So we will, we will subtract from the hundred and eighty-nine dollars, seven eleven, eighty-nine cents. The, can you give me a new total?
That was subtract the one thirty-eight seventy-two for the badge, which would give you a new total of one hundred. But that's a hundred eighty-nine thousand, uh, five seventy-three twenty-seven. Let me just double check that.
And transpose the number.
And then our, what about, what about the sixty-three that has to be paid?
That's on a credit card, uh, and the credit card bill is due, uh, with total of everything. My suggestion is that, uh, that ends up being paid. But I've offered a resolution to where that amount would be reimbursed by the sheriff. And that the procurement card as incentive would be suspended until that payment's made. Your new total is one hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars, twenty-seven cents.
So I guess we have a motion. I need to go through that, that motion that's on the table right now for the one eighty-nine, seven eleven, eighty-nine, correct? Yes. That's for the total amount without the subtraction, so I guess let's, let's do a roll call vote on that. The total, roll call. Right now, just so everybody's clear, we're, we're voting on the total amount that's on our iPads without any subtraction or deductions.
The original.
The original.
Original. Start with that.
Greg Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
No.
Okay. Oh, I'm talking to a ghost now? That's really nice. Charles Wolfsee?
No.
Brenda Simmons?
No.
Better be careful, the chair will.
Okay, so now we, so now we have a new amount that was given to me of a hundred and eighty-nine dollars, five hundred and seventy-three and twenty-seven cents.
You need nine thousand.
Hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve that.
Motion, Commissioner Simmons. Support from Commissioner Mayhew. Further discussion? Roll call vote. Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yep.
Charles Wolfsee?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Greg Scott?
Yes.
Everybody came back, kibbie. A resolution. Does anybody want to do anything with this that was put in front of us? Resolution to recoup cost of unauthorized purchase and to suspend procurement card privileges.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion with Commissioner Simmons? Support from Commissioner Wolfsee? Um, I, I guess is that, like, will they still be able to get their needs met? If, if the procurement card is suspended?
It will be less convenient, to be sure. Uh, but to, uh, rectify that, uh, simply once the treasurer receives payment for the invoice. Then the procurement card can be reactivated.
So if payments received today, then it can be reactivated. We're not. This is to make, this is for the payment of the sixty-three dollars.
Reimburse the county for the sixty-three dollars, forty-six cents.
Questions? Comments? Commissioner Scott?
Totally disagree with purchases made, but I'm not, uh. After thinking about it, I'm just not going to, uh, approve this resolution. But I think it was a waste of money, of taxpayer money.
Commissioner Wolfsee?
Well, I agree with the resolution.
Commissioner Simmons, anything? Commissioner Mayhew? Roll call vote. Roger Mayhew?
No.
Oh, man. Charles Wolfsee?
Yes.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Greg Scott?
No.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Any unfinished business, commissioners? Minnesota slash controllers report.
Uh, great report. It's on your iPads, um. I want to report again, an update on the five RFPs we have out for improvements at the county building. Uh, just the update is simply we've had more interest expressed in the past weeks. I'm looking forward to, uh, having some very competitive, uh, proposals submitted for your review next week. Review December coming up. Uh, we do have two contractors that are going through the building, one of them this morning, and another one will be coming through again this afternoon. So, you know, again demonstrates, I think they're serious instead of putting proposals together. Second item, uh, just to, uh, a heads up for future meetings. Your first meeting in December, again, next week, we will have a list of, uh, members to appointed boards and commissions. Who expressed an interest in reappointment. You'll consider those and then, uh, forward a resolution for official appointment at the next meeting. You do have, uh, three special advisory committees that are established under your bylaws. So they're not tied to a statute, but the bylaws that you've adopted for operation, that's the opioid settlement advisory committee. Transit advisory committee and the housing advisory committee. Those terms are all concurrent with the term of the commission. And we've got a number of responses from those members as well, but you won't see those until the organization meeting in January. Uh, because it is a board, uh, term tied, um. Committee that, uh, the board that's actually in term will be the ones that vote on. First of all, whether you even continue the committees, which I hope you do, and then second, who the members will be.
Any, any questions for our controllers as administrator? You do, Commissioner Simmons?
We have a. Yes, um, depending on the complexity of the bits that we receive next Thursday, you might need that meeting to make the final. Uh, decision to, uh, uh, get into a contract. But, uh, luckily, we've got a couple of meetings between now and then to decide whether or not that's a meeting we're going to need to have.
What was the question? What was the question?
Yes.
Are we going to have a meeting on December twenty-sixth? Are we going to have a meeting on December twenty-sixth, commissioner meeting?
Oh, oh. Okay.
Well, that's an official department head reports.
Can I make a comment regarding this?
Is it for Tim?
Well, it's regarding Tim and the situation of the bids and everything.
Oh, go ahead.
Just something for us to think about, um, when we had our budget meeting last Friday, I had asked Karen and it was just a number, like a specific, specific number, but again, we all know that tax revolving funds, money that can be used from that safely should be used for capital investments for the county. These are capital investments for the county that are much needed. This is very good that we're going through this process and I'm looking forward to putting measures in place that's going to save money on utilities and other costs. But again, I would just like us to keep in mind with all these hard decisions that we've made and the direction that we're heading, we need to remember that negative cash flow. The negative cash flow for this county needs to be dealt with, it can be dealt with now. Karen told us last week at a budget meeting that we do have substantial money safely that we can use for capital investments, but we have to get this negative cash dealt with. It's lingering over us, it's going to continuously hold us down. I would really appreciate you guys really thinking hard about this. Karen, I don't want to put you on the spot here, and I know it's not exact number, but safely, safely, we can even say take off twenty percent of your safe number. How much money can we spend on capital improvements for the county using the tax revolving fund?
Um, a few meetings ago, I had provided you with a spreadsheet showing what your balance was in the revolving fund. I want to remind you that you need three billion minimum to take care of tax settlement in the spring, in March. You have approximately two million dollars accessible to you to spend for your capital improvements. Keeping in mind, I need to have that three billion dollar threshold to stay self-funded.
Thank you.
And I want to add, it's been stated in this meeting numerous times, we need to make decisions and we need to move forward. That should apply on every decision that we've made. This negative cash flow has came up over and over and over and over again. We've, we've made a resolution, we all voted on it, we passed, we, we made a decision to move forward. This seems to be a topic that continuously seems to divide us. I think we, we need to move forward with that as well, is it all in the back of our minds? Absolutely. Did we request a plan moving forward? That this is something we need to address and, and come up with a plan to fix this problem? Absolutely. But I also don't think it's fair that every opportunity that this is thrown at us over and over and over again. Commissioner Scott just said it on the last motion. The decision was made back September, when, when the, when the budget was passed, the decision was made then. Instead, we revisit it, revisit it, and revisited it. So I, I want to make that statement, I want to, um, add to that, so.
Comment.
Elected, elected officials and department heads.
I can't make.
Commissioner, no, let's move forward right now.
Really?
You'll have your time when it says commissioner report. Go ahead clerk.
Oh, um, good morning, my name is Eddie or Edward Shafner. And on behalf of the Oglemont County Clerk's Office, I would like to show that the Clerk's Office is busy paying the bills, helping citizens with their viral records, working on court documents, and finished up the November election. We're going to hear from the Secretary of State to see which township will be having an audit. Thank you.
Anything else clerk? No, treasurer?
On behalf of the county treasurer, treasurer's office, the tax sale is complete, we sold twenty-six properties this year.
Anything else? Thank you. Housing Leanne, we have, we have you here today.
Yeah.
Would you like to give a report?
Sure.
Come on up.
Yeah. I'm going to pass it forward out so you can follow along with us.
Perfect.
With that, you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point is just to give you an update on how the housing program is doing this year. Uh, so, I'll hand it right out. Miss. Miss MI Hope.
Two hundred sixty-two, five hundred thousand. All funds are for rural projects, eleven units total amount, thirty-nine, two million sixteen. National Home for Neighborhood Impact Program, twenty twenty-four, a hundred, five hundred, five hundred and ten for nine months. Program is eight hundred, eight minutes, five hundred fifty. USDA, which, um, town sync. So, they showed me that six years, thirty-nine, nine days.
And then we have total loans, our total, uh, the first loans in county program is one million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars, fifty-one cents. That's like the hundred and eight loans that we are still maintaining. Local loan, we have three hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents, and that is thirty-six loans that was still maintaining. So it was almost at a million eight.
Wow.
This year, um, well, yeah, hopefully this year, I have several grants that I'll be applying for on behalf of the county, which you already gave me the resolution for, uh, for the, the Misha MI neighborhood. And we're going to apply for three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then I'm also going to go after some more, uh, USDA rural development HPG grant money, uh, because we still got one more grant that we're going to be using, which is over a hundred thousand. I'm going to apply for another fifty, fifty thousand, they'll probably bump it up more. So we got a lot of plans in the works, it's our keeping the program momentum going, it's our getting all the grant dollars in, at no cost to the county.
This is fantastic, you're doing an amazing job, very appreciated. Any questions for Leanne, comments?
Great job, thank you for all you do.
Very well, thank you. Tom? Hi, T.
We're just going to stand back here, if that's okay?
As long as we can hear you.
You're, you're a laptop, but Evan and I have been back here controlling the, uh, the Zoom for the meetings. And, uh, after we're done here at this meeting, we're going to go back to my office and upload it on YouTube where you can, uh, tell all your parents to, to watch you on, on YouTube today at our Oglemont County Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise? Anything? Equalization department?
No, we're good.
Sheriff, anything? Come on up.
I would just like to introduce Aubrey, she is going to be, uh, shadowing me today, so. Have anything to say? I don't think she does. She's going to be hanging out with me.
She's like, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other elected, uh, officials, department heads? Anybody on the phone? Uh, matters from the floor? Motion for adoption?
Well, pardon? I have them.
Motion for adoption?
Yeah.
Commissioners report, Commissioner Simmons?
I don't have anything to report. I have a comment though.
Yes.
I'm wondering if these students know what our job is.
Get on the floor.
Okay, um, we are the commissioners and we're elected, uh, officials and we represent certain areas in Oglemont County. And we are in charge of doing the budget. And we're in charge of looking at all the claims that go through, and if we disagree with one, we pull them. Uh, most of the time, uh, we don't have any issues. Uh, then we, uh, also work with our county administrator, uh, who keeps us straight with the laws and stuff that's going on, because he's more acquainted with them than we are. So our bottom line is, we do manage the budget and we do make policies and procedures for this county. And this is the only, the only, um, that does that. Yes.
So basically you guys just look at the news and try to fix out problems?
I'm sorry, we, basically what?
So basically you guys just try to fix problems that go on today?
Uh, we try not to create any problems, if that's what you mean.
Perfect.
There's, let me, let me add to this, Eddie. Um, uh, we plan ahead. We, we try to plan ahead, that's probably one of the big things. Yes. It's very difficult to, you can plan this year, the, the real idea is you want to plan even farther out. Um, I don't think you're planning yet for college, but you're probably starting to think about high school. So, um, planning, uh, planning out so that you don't run into, run into problems later. And budget, you've heard that, that mentioned here numerous times this morning. That's our, that's our song page that we, we go by for the year. We, there's so much money that comes in and there's so much money we project to come in, okay? Um, we're a little bit different than business, we don't sell a product or provide a service or money. We collect money from different sources. The biggest source would be the taxpayer and that'd be the property owner in the county. If you own a piece of property, you pay property tax. And then, so we project so much comes in and we build a budget, it's how to spend that. And we try not to spend any more than that. Because you don't have the real money.
So you, so basically you plan ahead to not run into a wall?
Right.
Perfect.
There you go.
There you go.
Perfect, yeah.
To try to have a fun balance in the positive, in the green, not in the red.
And I, I don't know, I don't think I'll be here when you, you get eighteen and you can, and you can get elected here, but Danny might still be here, you could sit right next to her.
I, uh, Commissioner Mayhew?
Uh, I don't have anything for that, I just got a question. For Tim, we got three jails, now we got inmates?
That'd be a question for the sheriff, he assigns where they go.
I think we got them in three, what to do with our budget?
So long as they're thirty-five dollars a day or under, it should be.
Well, the driving time, they're further away.
They are, but we're not going there every day either, as I understand it, those are the inmates who are sentenced and don't need to be brought back for court or other, you know, frequent trips like that.
They're just being held there.
They serve their sentence. Because we, we, it, we're, we're planning on doing, um, like monthly or quarterly comparisons, correct?
We will, right, so the first quarter will wrap up in December, so in January you'll see.
Where we're at.
Reports.
That's what I was looking for, kind of reports.
Yes.
Um, I don't have anything new to report, building and zoning meeting tomorrow night, had a couple of hot topics on there. Uh, Michigan Works Christmas party is, uh, first weekend December, that's coming up, they put on a really nice Christmas party for their employees at, uh, the Glide One River Rock, so, um, and, uh, Commissioner Scott?
Um, well, I was on business trip to Nevada last week and missed a couple of, uh, meetings. And the phone went dead too. Um, so, um, what I'd like, uh, like, what I've said before, and I'd like to, I'd like to expound on it, is our YouTube. A couple of, couple of weeks ago, we were over seven hundred and fifty views. People are watching. And like I said, I've said it before, more and more people are coming to me saying, I watch your, I watch your meetings. And, uh, um, so we're getting it out there. Um, I'm sorry to say the paper didn't make it today, but the paper's been doing very good, uh, reporting. But the whole meeting, that's the best thing, you can see the whole meeting and, and, uh, make, uh, at least then you, you're making, you, you can still make an assumption on it, you know, but at least you're still watching, people are watching the whole meeting, seeing everything about it. That's all I got.
Commissioner Wiltsy?
Uh, it's great to be here today with the Woodmore Prescott students, thank you guys for being here. Um, so important for our young generation to get involved. You guys could be our young leaders, uh, to help build the county, the state, America. We need more of it, so thank you guys for being here, appreciate it. Uh, we have a important meeting tonight, uh, MTA meeting, uh, six PM at West Branch Township Hall. Again, that's the MTA meeting tonight, uh, six PM at the West Branch Township Hall. Uh, last week I had a long report regarding a lot of the committees and stuff that I'm a part of, uh, I just have a report on EDC, we did have a meeting last week. Um, I've said it before, um, our EDC board is very strong, we're fortunate to have them. You know, we have had some financial cuts with everything that we had to do at the county and it's understandable that they were taken out of the line items, so we're working hard on trying to get other forms of revenue to keep that going. I mean, we definitely all know that, uh, Oglemont County is progressing and the more we can progress, the more jobs we can bring in, the new families, the people, build up our tax base, um, we will continue to grow and the EDC is an important aspect of that, so I'm proud to be on that board. Um, and then another thing, try to, you know, work with the commission here, this is my, my first term, and we're going on two years, I've tried to work with you guys, I try to respect everyone's ideas and feelings. Obviously, I can tell today Commissioner Simmons, Commissioner David is very annoyed by the fact that I continue to bring up this important topic. Um, I don't want us to be divided, but again, we all have different feelings, but we have an opportunity to get rid of five hundred plus thousand dollars in negative cash flow. We need to get rid of this negative money, we're making all these hard decisions as a county to finally get in a position where we can create sustainability and we got, absolutely need to get rid of this negative cash flow and I think we need to get rid of it now, we have the means to do it, we still have a good chunk of money to do these capital investments that need to be done. That's all I have.
Any general public comment?
There's your chance, you can say something.
Any general public comment?
Yeah.
Anything to say?
Eddie?
Uh, all I can say is that, um, it was cool to be able to say roll call and have, and have everybody say no. I feel a bunch of ghosts right now.
So the funny thing about Eddie is the way over here, he told me he was an introvert and he doesn't like to talk.
I believe him.
Uh, do you?
I'm the same way.
Any, any other folks want to talk? Any general public comment on the phone? Again, a big, a big shout thank you to everybody, the Woodmore Prescott schools for being here today, it is greatly appreciated, and all the elected officials and department heads that are, um, shadowing, uh, uh, being leaders today for the students, so a big, a big thank you to everybody. I think, motion to adjourn.
I'm, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Uh, favor say aye.
Aye.
All this motion carries, we are adjourned.
They go back to county building now, is that correct?
Yes.